Tell me the order, we have a forum, take a motion to approve the agenda of the month. I'll make a motion. All favor I. Close. Kerry, Rich from, how are you today?
How are you?
Good.
Um, three eight bridge, I'll do it on the west side last week in like. Yeah, where's it going? Pretty fast, now they got some form recover for some of the. Other information on uh, one five yet. Well, I think probably the next week or so the servers will be out. At least some projects there, at least that. Evans has been out on Evergreen and four twenty, he's got the one pipe point, he's got the only in there, looks like he's gonna dig it out. Put that one out on four twenty today and replace the old we pulled out, which is really good shape yet, so. And then I had. Do you have any questions or anything else? I don't think we're out putting color to this stuff too. I had a call from Jay Hunter Stan. It's not his property, it's Walter. But U T T, whatever. You think, well, he's got, there's two low water crossings on that, and he didn't know who was responsible for the maintenance of those. Low water crossings, I indicated that any crossing in the drainage districts can be. Landowner responsibility to take care of, however. There might be some. Inlets that don't bend from the field, that might be scouring out, and that silt might be filling them in, so. I didn't know what you guys wanted to do, if you wanted to look at it, talk about maybe it might need some cleaning too, but. There's a couple scour holes, and there are actually two low water crossings, not on that same property, but ones south and west of him and.
So the low water crossings are kind of silting in.
Well, he says that there's silt sitting in the one that he uses, then it could probably be cleaned out. I just indicated that, you know, if you want rock put back, and I don't know, you know, there's, there's nothing about. We had cattle can't cross through these drainage districts because they pound things up, I don't know what low water crossings are like. I kind of indicated, you know, we don't allow cattle across because they pound around in the districts. But what, what is the, what are the requirements for low water crossings?
You're not supposed to stop the water.
No, they're not stopping. Missouri Crossing. But, and of course, Missouri Crossing isn't the same as cattle pounding around.
Right.
In waterway either, so. And there's two of them there, I'm assuming they were put in, I didn't do any research on whether or not they were put in there when the district was put in or not, but. I think there's kind of a, a loose request, and so maybe at least look at it and see if there needs some cleaning done or. Cause there are some, there are some scour holes, he did not turn.
Does he have a next to rating person who can look at it?
I, we, we can talk to him about.
When you had the O one, the last time D D eleven was addressed.
It looks pretty, actually, the, the location, there's not trees or anything in it, so it looks like it's been kind of.
Been maintained over the years.
And that, that, that parcel is landlocked, there's like a little triangle that, that they need access to that, not someone else's property, so. There is a, there is a need for the crossing, it's just that. Should it be pipe or should it be, can it be a water crossing, and I don't know if the water crossing is without big of a deal. But it's a shallow enough ditch, it's, you know, you can.
So as long as it was put in on.
They look, and like I said, there's, there's surface drains that look like they're scouring out to, um, south. Just from aerial footage, or that's why I didn't.
Look at a little history to see if it was okay when. Yeah. Probably put in the last time it was cleaned, Ben, that's my guess.
Could be, but I didn't know if you guys wanted to see it from the aerial. It's on, it's south one oh five and west. Right, uh, go up northwest over one. No. Yeah, down one, there, right there, that's, now you zoom in on that, you'll see there's a low, a low water crossing on that parcel.
Now that little triangle?
No, no, that triangle is the part that needs access, but you see, well. There's one crossing right up there. And here, there's another one down here. This is another one, but he's not talking about that one, but if you scroll back over there. There's a pretty good scour here, and I think there's a surface drain here, which is silting this in, then there's another couple scowers along here. We didn't know it was time for it to be looked at for.
So is it stopping water now?
Well, I don't know if it's stopping watering, I think it didn't.
Crossing.
The crossing might be holding back a little water because it's got silt caught up in it, maybe.
She got low water and then she got.
Right.
That crossing would be a little muddy.
And I wouldn't think the district would have to pay for it.
Not for the crossing, but if we do need to, well, that's, that's the question I wanted to present to you, you as. And all the passes seems like bridges and forwards are landowner responsibility, I would, I was, I'd make the same assumption that the low water crossing would also be that way. But if there's.
Situation above and below it, though, it'd be the district's.
Yeah, if it's still, if there's still patient going on, causing the problem, then. The district maybe needs to look at maybe doing some cleaning.
Main question to me is if that was okayed, that crossing was okay to be put in by either an engineer or whatever.
Maybe that was, yeah.
It was cleaned last time.
It must be for the shallow too there, though.
It looks, it looks fairly, I mean, just by the way the slopes are.
Almost looks like a meander extreme.
So what direction do you think you want to take then, just? First of all, we can do some digging around, see if those low water crossings were.
Okay.
Went in. Is that something that she can upstairs and they threw some notes?
Cause me and the history should, should.
And then.
And they, um, the engineers might actually. See some of that stuff too, I could probably throw a question their way too.
Cause they're working on that one now. Yeah, I just run it by them first, I guess, see if anybody can figure out if power and when those crosses got put in and then.
I mean, there's a need, that little corner pieces is, is the only, that's, that's the only way to access that corner. Landowners around there are different, except for that parcel and the one these two that are the same year. So it's kind of a landlocked corner.
So I'm sure I put it for a reason years ago.
Yeah, I'm sure. Even leaving one in the south, it seems like they were potentially put in for.
Yeah, see what. Won't make come off less.
But that one might be a little different, is that there's roadway accessible sides, so why would you need the crossing there if you can?
Yeah, that's weird.
Get a driveway. And it doesn't look like that one.
Looks like it's full with, so it's not like it's a narrow bridge, tougher equipment to get across. That's why it's a road.
It probably doesn't make me even be used much, but it's there.
Which has no trees.
Yeah, the trees, I might be, yes, simple little cleaning here or there.
Well, I told them bring it to your attention and. Do some digging and find out.
Yeah, or is it, maybe you can just have somebody take a look at it and see if there's something to clean out a few spots and maybe. A little something around those, if there's some surface inlets that are still going to get them repaired up to and. Doesn't appear anyways, but we'll leave that up.
That's all we've got for this morning.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any else, Rich?
No, no.
Uh, drainage, uh, standpoints. So on the list. Through the standpoints, sir, sir, I was not gonna, you have a discussion on. All favor I. All right, close. Here. And regular claim.
Any questions?
D ten, those two bids with trees.
And the ones already passed.
Yeah, I mean, which.
Thirty days or whatever, but.
He just updated the contact. I mean, cause he, he basically said if we weren't in a rush, I think where they could move it on down their schedule, that bid would be pretty solid, I think. He just didn't, if it was immediate, then it would be different bit, so. But we should probably be looking at. Back to them and something in here.
Yeah.
Just put it on next week.
Or, oh yeah, as well, next week, give it. Getting all, get it done, the stall and crops are out. We've got competitive bids there, so they're not too far apart. Sounds good to me. Uh, any questions on the regular claims? Can't take a motion to approve regular claims.
I'll make a motion.
No, sir.
All favor I.
All right.
I close. Kerry. Any reports?
Yeah.
All favor I. Oh, any payroll eligibility or salary changes, liquor license? Uh, Justin Stotts, second director of North Iowa Regional Housing, employee health insurance options, how you doing, Justin?
Good.
How are you? Not too bad.
Um, so I, I had sent a message to Jackie about, um, uh, a request that we had. I don't know, I was directed by the association counties, um, to contact you, and really. What it, what it comes down to, so if you're not aware, North Iowa Regional Housing Authority provides, um, housing assistance in a county area, including Worth County, where we have. Twenty fiscal units in Manly and here in Northwood, and then, um, we also have voucher assistance that we provide, um, to people who qualify. We were created to do that, um, by partnership of eight counties in the area, including Worth County, um, through a twenty eighty agreement, so, um, we do that. Or we take that function that really is granted to you guys and operate it on your behalf, um, through that agreement. And that's where this comes in, is we're, we're a small agency of six people, we have four people that are on health plan, it's become really unaffordable for. And anyone that runs a small business knows this too, it's really unaffordable to, to go out for health insurance for. The agency, we were looking at like a self insured option where, um, we would, um, cover that cost on behalf of our employees, and it's just not feasible for. An agency of our size, and that's where this request comes in, is that we've. Um, I reached out to the association counties, because our employees do qualify for stable, uh, retirement, because they're, they are government employees, but. Um, they will not take us directly, we have to go through, um, one of our partner counties, and that's where this request comes in, and. At this point, I'm not asking for any commitment, I'm just asking to explore whether it's even feasible for any of our member counties, feasible for us. Um, either way, um, really, the proposal, if it, if it came to fruition. Would be that, um, our, our employees could join whatever health plan of whatever partner county would accept us. On, and we would, the agency would pay any administrative, any costs that would be. Um, bared by the county, so there would be no cost to the county, that's how we picture it, I mean, if, if it doesn't prove to be feasible. We would stick with what we're doing, I mean, costs though would just keep going up astronomically, and so my, my board has sent me. To, to try to figure out other options, as we've seen almost double digit percentage increases every year, and. So your, your county and Mitchell County were once recommended by the association of counties because of the, the, um, plan types that you use, so. Really, that's what I'm asking for, is if, if you consider allowing us to explore that option, see if, um. If it could work for you guys without being too much of a burden, and we would pay any, any administration costs and any actual insurance costs.
Just trying to get into a better group plan rate.
That's right, that's right, that's really what it comes down to, is if we can't make it a group that's.
Right, affordable.
Have you reached out to Ryan Bourbon at Group Benefit Partners, because that's who we work with now.
That's.
And he could have some options for you possibly too.
Um, I believe that was to, so the association of counties copied me with. Him on that, but they were waiting for me to make this, or to reach out to you to see if this was even an option. That was really the proposal first, is that I, I may be able to see options with them, and honestly, we're exploring everything at this point, this is just one of them, but.
I think I'd check with him at the same time, is, the thing that concerns me is we're just building up our self insured funds.
Yeah.
And bringing more people in, I mean, it may be fine, but I, I just, this early in the game, it kind of concerns me.
And that would be a question Ryan could answer too, because, yeah, we'd say we just made a big change of cell phone even ours, our insurance, so. Um, I mean, it's worth looking into, you know. But Ryan would be the best contact for that, because he knows how our, how we're set up. And, uh, yeah, he, he'd be able to let us know whether it's ever bad to, and to make any changes or not, so.
So, yeah, I, I'll get in contact with them and, um, let you guys know, really, I, I didn't want to go fishing around asking that without, you know, bringing it to your attention first, and so. It was really just to get it on your radar, but not asking for any decision or commitment today, just to let you know that that's what we're.
No, I think you can look into it, I mean, you know, it's, if it doesn't affect us on the backside, I wouldn't see any issue of it, can save you guys some money, that, that's, that's a good thing, so. Yeah, you want to make contact with him and, and see what he says, and then, uh, we'll spend, let's see what the next couple weeks plays out as and. See how, let's see how it looks anyways.
All right. All right, thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you, Justin, appreciate it. All right, where's that go, Melissa?
Two things, um, we, their venture school is not full, and so we don't have anybody from one of Iowa or Worth County, um, sign up yet. So if anybody is interested in going to venture school, let me know. Um, I have one possibility, and then also, I just sent out a press release, um, Iowa workforce development is working on some, uh. Another, uh, labor shed, so they're going to, um, be calling around, um, so if anybody receives a phone number from a five seven three area code. It is, uh, Iowa workforce development, and they're working with Iowa Development Authority to, um, complete a labor shed employment study for our area.
Cool. Um. That it?
Yep.
Well, so John Colby will probably be in touch with you again here.
Okay. Um.
Ideas.
I'm at a conference on Wednesday through Friday.
Yeah, well, whenever.
Okay.
He told me in touch with you, you know, if he's got some different ideas, so. See what happens.
All right.
Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, people service, Chris, I'm just here to address the, uh, north violation we got for the wastewater plant, um. The April one, we, we failed because we had to send a head unit in to get, and just quit working, so we sent it in. It was very minimal, you know, it cost like a hundred dollars to fix it, so it was cheap, I was surprised. So that's, I would say, why we failed, led around everything by hand, and you're just guessing. Um, June, I came in, honestly answered why we failed, uh, other than it happens right after a big weekend usually, like. We're, we're running along about thirty eight thousand gallons, and then we'll do an eighty thousand or seventy five thousand gallon day, and then we sample and we fail. We have the option of starting up the other half of the plant, I've kind of held up on that, because we do that, that doubles all of our expenses out there, so. And then now I failed July two, only by, we had, we had four samples, one sample come back bad. The other three were almost negligible, but one sample, because the low, the limits are so low during the hot months, that way it's really easy to fail. Um, my limit is one point two, and I failed it, we're one point one two eight, so I, I just barely failed, but failed, doesn't matter. So we can look at that option, start up the other half of the plant, if we need to. I'd like to do one more month and see what happens.
Right, so it's not, so we're not able to treat it just on those larger.
Those big days.
Larger days when we gain enough water.
Yep. We're doing anywhere from thirty three to forty two percent when it comes to extra water in one day. And, you know, plant, it's just like us, you know, they want a steady diet, and we're throwing all this food at it, until it's trying to keep up, and it takes a couple days to catch back up again.
Right.
Like we run that other half, that's around it all the time, because.
Yep.
Once you get it started.
Once I get started, it's gonna be running forever, and then it's just gonna increase our, our electric cost double from here on up.
That's why I've kind of held up on doing it, there's, and other times I would like to turn it on, but it's like. Once or twice a year we have trouble, it's like.
Right. Yeah, we hate to, uh, get violations, but.
Right.
I guess at some point, to avoid those, we may have to.
We will have to eventually, I just, I'd like to run one more month and see what happens, because my B O D and T S S, I have no detex, I have actually zero. We're, we're, I'm below testing limits, so that's why I don't understand why we get the spikes.
Right.
Treat the rest of it, yeah. The morning is one that's kicking our butt, once, once a month. It'll be our limits like point one two right now, and I think it's point one one in this month. Point oh, point one oh. And, uh, we'll run about. Right at zero or, or point oh five or point oh eight, and then all of a sudden we'll have a three. But the rest of, you know, like I said, B O D and T S S were, we're actually showing zero on M R, because we don't have any.
Right.
Are you corresponding with D N R then, or does the board need?
No, I'll, I'll report, I'll, I'll send that letter back to them, and I'll give you guys time to handle it, yep.
Yeah, I guess run it again, see what happens, and if.
If I fail again this month, we'll have to look at firing it up, that would have happened. Fourth time in five months.
Right, no, nothing, and I'll start getting pushy with this, so.
Yep, yep.
All right, yeah, see what it does, I guess, if we can control it. Then, yeah, if it fails again, then we have no option, but.
Right, yeah. We're out. I don't know that. I guess in April, I'm sure, because I, I had no automatic controller, and so I just accepted limits, and you're chasing the tail the whole time, so. That one I can explain, but. Even July, I can't. Other than our big flows.
All right, well, yeah, I wonder another month, see what happens. Any questions for Chris? Thank you. It's Petersburg, how are you?
Good.
Too bad. Water towers inspection for us.
Yeah.
Two of them. So I just handed you the. Oh, inspect, we inspected both towers out there. And to do the Zingua water tower, which is a very small tower. We looked at the inside, the outside, a lot of what we looked at is the safety, as far as safety lines, look at what the D N R requires, as far as screens, vents, et cetera, and. Do a pretty thorough, um, look at the coatings, the coatings or the paint on those towers is what, what makes them last. So the, the north tower interior, it's never been full water, so it's never been. Good shade, exterior, good shade, there's just a few small areas where there's some minor crevice corrosion. Page four, we had some recommendations as far as basically, tell it needs to be cleaned before it's put in the service. The exterior, we'd recommended that it be power washed and that the spot corrosion be touched up before this goes in the service. Page five, we have some cost estimates. Included estimates for complete coating interior and exterior, even though it's not necessary at this time, so we just noted that as a future priority. But for right now, if that tower were to be, um, put in the service, we're recommending, like I said, the pressure washing, and then we just touch up. A few areas that are, they're currently interior and exterior, so to put that tower in the service, twenty five to forty thousand dollars is what we're looking at for costs on that.
Plus the valve.
Yeah, plus, plus the piping, the valve, et cetera, yeah, yeah, this is the tower itself, it's nothing too surprising on this one, since it's never done put in the service, but. Uh, we had pictures in there, some recommendations on a couple screens that need to be addressed, et cetera, but all in all, this tower.
It was the good news first, didn't it?
Same thing for the other water tower. The, we call this one the Diamond Hill Water Tower. Um, this tower was built in two thousand and five, about a hundred and twenty feet tall. Page two, the, we did a visual inspection on this, we did not go into the tank, once we go into the tank, we have to disintact, so. This hold the water down, um, through the visual inspection of the interior from the top. The wet inside was in poor condition, the coatings were. Which was suspected, um, primarily from freezing ice damage, et cetera, tears have banged up, and then it starts to corrode. There was a few areas on the roof as well, the exterior is in good condition, there's some areas that are damaged, some spot corrosion. Um, we looked at the screen on the overflow, that needs to be changed out sometime. The vent on top of the towers in fair condition, there's two holes that does put a note, which we're not really sure what the story is on that. The rusting in good condition, the hatches are in good condition, that lock, good condition, so it's under two percent of the exterior surface area that does have corrosion on it. So our recommendations on this tower is the interior needs complete white blast and recoating, the exterior needs a power wash, and then. Um, some spot cleaning, surface preparation, and then recoating, not the, just the batteries on the outside. And, and the towers that are in service, we do recommend maybe three to five minutes for inspection, um, touch up the coatings as needed. And most of these coating systems are about a twenty year lifespan on them, where if you're sixteen on this one, so it just needs to be touched on. Cost estimates, page five, interior full blast, utility sixty to eighty thousand. Um, then the exterior pressure washing, and touch up coating, or twelve to twenty two thousand there for an estimate on that. The pictures are kind of hard to tell on an interior, you know, page six. It's hard to get good pictures inside a tank when it starts like that, but you see a lot more corrosion in this one than the other ones, than the other one was. I guess, all in all, most surprises, I think this is what Chris was suspecting, was that the interior was. I guess, all in all, most surprises, I think this is what Chris was suspecting was that the interior was starting to corrode, so we are recommending. At what point that happened, we obviously didn't even try to touch up the thing when they did that. But that, that would be to be addressed at the same time they're doing that, touch up.
The worst part is when we do this, we have to take that tower out of service.
And I don't know, are we capable, we're probably not capable of under live pressure.
For that amount of time, are we?
Well, we need, we need too much water for backwash, the water airplane, right, that's gonna be a problem.
So we'd have to bring in those.
Bring in a portable thing, portable tank of some sort to. Or a couple of them, yeah, something. We, we definitely, we've made it on. Our system pressure, just running up what we need, but. Like the extra water capacity.
How many, how many thousands of gallons it takes to backwash?
Well, that's right, your own, I have, we have to calculate it off, I'm guessing around twenty two to twenty five thousand.
Yeah, supposed to be a little trickier, I'm just. Going in there to go to pay. Something, I guess, we gotta look at, so maybe we can get something going by next, next spring, next summer. It's time to start planning now to get this done.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right, that's total infrastructure ERP money there. Be a good use of it because.
Would be a good use of it.
Otherwise, yeah, it's. That's. Makes you, makes you wonder on the cost of bringing portable tanks and setting all this other stuff up, before you blow a bunch of money on just temporary.
I think that's the price in those tanks.
Wouldn't we be smarter to invest in using ARP money to run that pipe?
Use that pipe to back up.
Well, then we could, then we could run off that tower. Yep, at least, but it still costs us twenty thousand to clean it and just get it serviced too.
Do we have enough water used to justify using that one in the first place?
No, we put the mixer in that one.
You could, you could use it, yeah, you just have to run a mixer in there and probably not run it as such full levels, because that's quite a taller.
Yeah, you couldn't, well, we'd never be able to run both towers because there's such a height difference.
Right.
Unless you put some else two panels in.
Right.
You know, and then the small one or whatever, that's true, you wouldn't get the turnover in. Right, and then just call you more problems.
Right, so you're better off, if you're gonna use the blue one, you're just gonna use the blue one.
Right.
Yeah, sign, sign holder.
Don't put any money into it. Well, you need to keep it available, because that way when that, when you work on a big one, you put water in little one, we use little one for the, for a month, then we.
Use it for backup when you get a big one.
Yeah.
So there we're doing one of families right now, and that's the advantage of the old towers, they're able to keep it in service and, and use that, so. Let's get it on for three weeks.
So I would think you'd be able to use ARP money, that'll work, run that line down and do all of this.
Just a question, then, when they develop the other side, does that Diamond Joe tower still take the capacity of new development at all, or it won't? Just, yeah, if they start filling up.
Oh, it's not a water port.
It's gonna depend on the type of development that goes in there, and that's when we developed all this and submitted the D N R schedules, it was. It's gonna work immediately, but if there is a more major one. And that's how we worded it to the D N R was, it's there, it's available for when the time comes.
That's our, that's our plan, is that thing starts to get about half, three quarters full, we might be looking to open up that big tower.
Question, when we were out on the interstate with that semi fire, we went to the water tower to fill tankers. We were unable to fill tankers only by gravity ports, or something different that could be done there? To fill up fire department tankers at a faster rate, because that was killing the sound on the interstate.
You're getting, if you hook up five inches, you're getting twelve gallons a minute.
Yeah, this was just a flow and you're, it was terrible.
Which, which hydrant, yeah.
They were hooking up by, I don't know which hydrant they were on, but they were up by the water tower, the main water tower at Diamond Joe.
Get much better than that.
That should fill up this vast, that community.
Yeah, yeah.
It should, especially being right there, you're not losing any friction or nothing.
What are the tankers we're carrying?
Probably two and a half, even two and a half should take, and it wouldn't be no longer there than in any town.
Right.
Because we're running, even if it's almost empty, it's at forty two pound of pressure.
Also talking about the vault, and I know I've asked this before, but what about wastewater? Is that, is that gonna be able to take care of growth?
Yeah, especially with those restrictions they have in that industry, it'd just be minor.
We've got, yeah, we've got enough plants, we have enough capacity there to do it.
Just need water.
Yeah, we just need more water storage.
And the covenants, there's not a lot of big water users that can build in there, so.
Okay, well. Yeah, could you look at getting an estimate on tanks?
Yeah, I can, I think, I think we looked into this a little bit.
I know we talked about it, it was last year, a year before, even maybe we talked about it, being an issue of what we're gonna do if we have to rework that tower. That's gonna be a lot of, a lot of extra work if we're running on tanks and stuff, there'll be a lot more manual stuff to babysit that thing for two to three weeks.
Well, we can, we can park the tanks out in National Park, since we don't have anything, but off the fire hydrants and just leave it there. The well control still controlled, it would have to be them playing with numbers on the control panel.
Where's the nurse, where's the nurse place at? Lucky if we get somebody out of the cities or DeMorn.
Most, most systems have another water tower, or they can just run their plant and put the pressure valves on fire hydrants and wastewater when they're doing it.
Yeah.
This is gonna get to be a long enough time.
Right.
Want to dump all that water for that long.
Right. Take that chance, if something fails, then you're really in a pinch. When something in your well fails.
In the past, did you ever get a bid on one of that bike though?
Yeah, with Jason, that's, that's, that was, uh, three thirty. Something like that, three thirty, three fifty, and it was under, it was under four hundred thousand to run a pipe off that tower.
Good way to pay for it.
When we talked, when we talked, it was, we're probably gonna be duct lined at the point that time, because PVC was.
No, it's, no, you can't get ductile until March.
I know guys that are getting PVC that's stamped two days before they receive it, that's when it was made, it's basically you coming out of the plant, cooling off, going on the truck and. Yeah, two and three days before they receive it, that's the date it was, it was made, so it's, and they're limited supplies, so they're getting whatever they can put out that's going out, so. Anywho, um, yeah, yeah, I'll be looking into that, Jason, on the tank situation and. We talked about, we need to keep going on this, so we can try to get something planned for next spring, next summer. Um, because obviously, business out there has been just huge, and that place isn't going anywhere, so. Joys of being in the utility business, folks, that's what it is.
We need to cover that hole on top of the Diamond Joe one.
Probably not now, but it needs to be included with the cleaning, blasting. It's on the side of that hatch, so it's not.
Alright, yeah, if you'll do that for us, Jason, then we'll. And you said Lakeside was gonna pick up those straw logs.
Yeah. Maybe get Friday.
They did come there Friday, they were up to. I dropped that the other day, it was up there last week, looks really good, all mowed and. Right, anything else for Jason? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, next, discuss, discussion of possible action on engaging NRCO to update the county comprehensive plan. While they all know it needs to be done, it should have been done by groups before. Just like some other things around here, so I guess we'll have to just like bullet and do it, I don't know that it'll take. A ton of money. Just to review and. Brought up to twenty twenty one.
I think I shared with you guys last time, there was a, um, letter from Joe Myrie. It was basically a bid for the service or whatever, or a proposal for the service, so. I don't know if you want NRCO to get rolling on something like that for the comprehensive plan again, or.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
Want me to contact Chris and see who needs to be contacted?
Chris or Myrtle have, see who's, who's taking that stuff over in their, in their office and.
And they can have something formally that you can sign.
Take a motion to engage NRCO to develop her update. Okay, there's a second, I'll second it, any other questions? All favor I? I, both, right, yeah, we will contact them and bring us some paperwork and we'll sign it, move forward. Uh, department heads. Other department heads?
Our head is out, so.
Alright.
People should start sending back statements soon.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was due.
Alright, survey's weekly. I had partners for children, and we went through the FY twenty two funding, we're gonna have money that might revert. So we discussed mentoring and substance abuse services, that we could possibly use that money on. And then we did a RFP for the girl circle, but didn't have enough information, so they had to go back to them. To get some final information, so I'm gonna have a meeting again this week on that. Then I had North Iowa Long Term Disaster Recovery Committee, and we approved the payment of the website and the domain that got set up. And then discussed the marketing brochure, and each county right now is gonna print their own at the present time before we. Get somebody involved and make it a more permanent type one, and then we'll discuss member recruitment efforts throughout the community too, we get. Money to build up into this thing. I did North Iowa Children's Alliance, and met the new E C I area director, which is Jackie, no, we're out of Fertile. You know, her, and then we just discussed all the administrative needs and how to pay for them that she might need, went through. Making sure that the FY twenty two contracts were up to date and in place, and then got an update on the Hancock County Childcare Center. And we kicked in twenty seven thousand back year about two, three months ago, uh, to save that childcare center. The floor has been installed and they were granted a full license in July for forty kids, so it's working out good for us. I did have, same time, right after the North Iowa Long Term Disaster Recovery on Wednesday. I was supposed to have a Zoom with Second Judicial District meeting, but we got it, we got going too long and I missed it. So I did miss that one. That was my week.
Yeah, it was like a busy week.
Mark, I just met with Jackie and I met actually by M W C A on Thursday, I think it was. So the new guy, Scott Smith, and our new rep for the area, and. Definitely wants to help us get back on track and see if I'm there premiums down, and he's got some great things and, Rich, you've already, hopefully you've contacted him. Or everybody should contact him and stay in touch with him and see what we can do. And the same, back the other way, hopefully soon.
Be nice when that's.
Yeah, and that it sounds like it's gonna take a little while for.
Yeah. We're just. Yeah, we're really hitting, how were that three to five year averages, we're heading, we're in the peaks, so, I mean, other year before the one. Some of the bad ones are still dropping off and the worst ones are coming on, we're still, yeah. No, but he definitely wants to help and come up and do some site inspections and get to one of our safety meetings and stuff, he said, so. Keep working on that.
Alright, I just had a, had a meeting with Melissa and John there, Heart of Power. Bruce from I A Day. The, uh, welcome, sir, come and go out there, just discussing our development, and Bruce has got some. Developers he's worked with and working with still that are looking to do some stuff, so he's gonna try to help sell, uh. Sell our development area to one of these, or a couple of these people, in hopes of putting something in, because there has been some. Uh, interest, a lot of people don't want to own the buildings, they just want to lease them, so, so people that Bruce works with. May potentially build the buildings and then lease them out to whoever, you know, whoever would want to, so. But good meeting with those guys, hopefully we can get, get something moving by next spring, it'd really be nice. Construction costs and construction people get available, so. Right, yeah, we're still moving there, everybody's going all in on that one, yeah, so.
There's the workforce that will come from, that's scary.
That's the drawback.
They even have restaurants that say that.
Yeah.
You might, yeah. It's crazy.
Bird things close because they can't get help.
And they have right on their doors, there's gonna be more wait time because we don't have enough people, be patient.
Yeah, we sent a guy over there to Subway last week inside, and he walked inside, nobody showed up, that base was closed.
So, yeah, it'll be interesting to the future. I haven't heard back from Will, so I'll let you know soon, I do, ten o'clock tomorrow works, so. So, we'll ten or ten, ten thirty, eleven.
Yeah, whatever gives me time for.
Yeah, one, two, somewhere around that.
And basically just put closed session for blah, 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 and the discussion on what now, term.
Find a way to zoom, I'm pretty proud of, I'll be driving, but.
Right.
Figure something else.
Well, like I say, it should be.
And I'll set up a Zoom so that.
I think he was gonna send it to us.
Tell him to send us a clickable link, so I don't have to go in.
You don't want to do that and drive?
No.
But anyways, yeah, so we get that done, otherwise we'll stop today till next week, see how, just get the list too. Anything else? Go take a motion to adjourn. Second it.